All right, everybody, I'm gonna call to order this regular city council meeting for the city of Troutdale this September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with great energy and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take roll call, Sarah, please.
Okay. Counselor Rittman.
Here.
Counselor Caswell.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Wittrin.
Present.
Counselor Glance.
Excused.
And Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Thank you very much. Agenda update, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda is as written, there are no changes.
Okay. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comment. Public comment on non-agenda consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Public comment is open if anybody on... We don't have anybody on Zoom. If anybody in council chambers would like to make public comment tonight, now is the time. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, a report from the Troutdale Visitor Center, Marley Boxler. The floor is yours.
As Marley gets settled there, just wanna let the council know, one of the reasons we wanted to have this on the agenda tonight was is that you made the decision a couple of years ago as we were coming out of COVID and as we remodeled the visitor center and took back the money that we were giving to the chamber for them to do our visitor center. I thought it would be a good time to report on what has transpired in taking over that responsibility, how it's operating down there. So Marley is prepared tonight, let you know all the wonderful things happening down at the visitor center, so that's why we're having it, it's just to let you know what you approved a couple of years ago.
Thanks. Hello, Mayor and counselors. Thank you for having me tonight, I'm here to present on the Gateway to the Gorge Visitor Center. And I have a little presentation for you all, so thank you for having me. For our agenda, I'm gonna cover a little bit of background on the visitor center as Ray alluded to a bit of it already for me. And the overview of our daily operations and our merchandise sales, congestion management through Multnomah Falls parking permits, a data dive into our Google Analytics and downtown visitation, and then some of our next steps. Background, we've got a wonderful photo from our grand opening with the ribbon cutting ceremony, so this photo was from April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is when the city of Troutdale launched Explore Troutdale to manage marketing and destination development for the community and opened the gateway to the Gorge Visitor Center. Troutdale is really uniquely situated at the confluence of the Sandy and Columbia Rivers and on the western border, boundary of the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area, and it's where the historic Columbia River Highway begins. We have hundreds of thousands of visitors that pass through Troutdale every year to see our iconic outdoor attractions and recreation destinations, and we have a really unique opportunity to capture those people and bring them into Troutdale and welcome them into our beautiful little town. So by providing information and resources on the area's attractions, the visitor center is actively strengthening Troutdale's relationship with the Columbia River Gorge, namely the Waterfall Corridor. As we continue to enhance the visitor experience and provide memorable interactions, we live up to our title as the gateway to the gorge. I'm sure many of you have had experiences with other gateway towns to national parks, and that's kind of what we're aspiring to be. We're aspiring to be the town that welcomes people to this wonderful natural area and provides information and resources while also reminding them to come back to Troutdale for things like lunch and dinner and shopping and dining and staying in hotels and all that good sort of stuff. So for some daily operations information, we are open every single day of the week. We have a public restroom in the visitor center, and so remaining open every single day of the week is important to us. During the summer hours, we're open every single day from nine AM to five PM, and during the winter hours, Monday through Thursday, we're open nine AM to three PM, and Friday through Sunday, nine AM to five PM. In two thousand and twenty-two, we saw three point four thousand visits to the visitor center. Two thousand and twenty-three, we saw two point eight thousand visits, and two thousand and twenty-four, we've already this year seen two point six thousand visits, which is a thirty percent increase over this time last year. So at this point last year, we would have been thirty percent less than where we currently are this year. And our visitation is consistent with what we saw in two thousand and twenty-two. This also isn't surprising from what we saw with visitation at Multnomah Falls. So when Multnomah Falls visitation changes, Troutdale's visitation changes. And our busy season is really June through September, which is the same that Multnomah Falls experiences. Some of our top questions are, how do I get to Multnomah Falls? What should I see or do in the Waterfall Corridor? And where should I get lunch or dinner? We do sell a small amount of merchandise in the visitor center, which helps us, you know, it doesn't really keep the doors open necessarily, but it definitely helps us, you know, earn a little bit more revenue for the city to help support it. But what it mainly does is help us promote Troutdale because it's putting Troutdale on T-shirts and sweatshirts and stickers and all sorts of fun things. And so you can see here the revenue that we had two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and two thousand and twenty-four. In two thousand and twenty-three, partway through the year, we introduced sweatshirts, which were a big hit this year. And this year, we are already at two thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, so we'll probably hit the same numbers that we had in two thousand and twenty-two. And lots of people are buying T-shirts consistently and, you know, all sorts of other fun things. So it's a really great way for us to get our brand out there to the visitors who are coming from all over the world. So next, I wanted to touch on some congestion management partnership work that we've been doing with the Multnomah Falls parking permits, in which we've partnered with ODOT and the Forest Service. We've been partnering with ODOT and the Forest Service since we started our operations in two thousand and twenty-two. Two thousand and twenty-two was the year that we had the historic highway permit to drive, not a toll, to drive the, or to access the federal lands adjacent to the highway. And they allowed us to hand out permits for that, but we did not have permits for Multnomah Falls that year. In two thousand and twenty-three, they decided to eliminate that permit and just do the Multnomah Falls I-84 parking lot permits. So we had them in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And we have same-day in-person free permits. And the program was created really to help reduce congestion and improve safety during peak visitation times and encouraging visitors to take transit and shuttles. If they don't purchase in advance, they can pick them up at the visitor center on a first come, first served basis, and it's been a really successful program. In two thousand and twenty-three, we handed out four hundred and twenty-two permits, which we were very proud of at the time, because as a brand-new visitor center, no one knew that the visitor center even existed. And this helped really put us on the map because suddenly these people who are going to Multnomah Falls were having a reason to come to Troutdale. We saw that the busiest day of the week was Friday, and the least busiest day was Tuesday, and I have them labeled out by days of the week for that. And we handed out seventeen percent of our total permits because we received twenty-five a day, hundred days, four hundred and twenty-two permits, so only seventeen percent, but we were still really proud of that. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, we over-doubled our permits handed out, we handed out one thousand seventy-two permits. And we had really consistent visitation on each of the days, there really weren't many fluctuations between Tuesdays and Saturdays, it was really consistent throughout it all. I remember being really shocked at the amount of people that were coming in on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I had to buy some noise-canceling headphones so I could actually work in my office, because it's too hard not to listen in to what everyone else is talking about. And so that was forty-three percent of the permits that we had available to us, and we actually did sell out of permits the last weekend, which was Labor Day weekend, which was also when the historic highway unexpectedly closed. So a little bit more on the congestion management for Multnomah Falls, this was some data from Experience Mount Hood, the gorgeous presentation at the Historic Columbia River Highway Advisory Committee meeting on September fifth. And this is showing how visitation in Multnomah Falls is still increasing, but the congestion at the I-84 parking lot is not, which means that more and more people are taking the transit and shuttle options. And we've been actively working with those transit and shuttle partners to make sure that Troutdale is part of their routes as well. So next, we'll do a deep dive into some Google Analytics. This is from April through September of two thousand and twenty-four. We had seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four people who viewed our business profile, and the majority of those are coming from mobile views, so they're either on Google Maps or they're Google Searching and coming across our page. Very few, only eighteen percent of results are coming through desktop. We had one thousand five hundred and sixty-six business profile interactions, which were website clicks, asking for directions, or making a phone call through Google Maps. And you can see how it really peaks in August, but, you know, it's pretty consistent between June through August. In September, we're only, you know, a couple of days in, so that deep drop isn't really what it'll end up as. But we also showed up in three thousand two hundred and three searches through Google. And one of the things I really wanna highlight here is the reason why the visitor center is named what it is. It's called the Gateway to the Gorge Visitor Center and not the Troutdale Visitor Center on purpose, and that's because we knew that more people were going to search "the gorge", "gorge visitor center," or "Columbia River Gorge Visitor Center," or some other version of that than "Troutdale Visitor Center." And in order to come up in people's results and encourage people who are already going to go to Multnomah Falls or the Waterfalls to come to Troutdale, we wanted to make sure that our SEO picks them up. So we want to come up when they search "gorge," "the gorge," "Columbia River Gorge." And so that's been a successful way of putting Troutdale literally on the map when people are already planning a trip to the gorge. You can see here our top five search, like what people searched and found us. We've got "visitor center," "gateway to the gorge," "gorge," "the gorge," "Columbia River Gorge." These are some fun little reviews that we've had on the Google Business Profile page. I highlighted, well, we have more reviews than this, but they don't always say things, and they are always positive, though, so that's really great. Some of the things that I wanted to point out are the things they've highlighted in bold. We have people saying, "beautiful little town," "nice quaint little town," "cool town once you get away from the truck stops," "extremely helpful," "we stumbled upon Troutdale by accident and instantly fell in love with the entire town." "Based on her recommendations, we were able to have a stress-free day of exploring." "We left with much more than that, a wonderful and detailed plan for the day and suggestions for what became an amazing brunch at McMenamins Edgefield." And then just so many other great things that people are saying about the town, about the visitor center, it really is proving that, you know, being this welcoming place, that we're welcoming mainly people who are visiting the Waterfalls, but we're now giving them this experience in Troutdale that they might not have had otherwise. They might not have stopped in our town because there wasn't information for them on what they wanted. And we're able to help promote all of our businesses. So next, I wanted to dive into some of the data on downtown. This is the map of the area that I'm looking at with this data, so it really is a really small portion of downtown. It doesn't include Sugar Pine, it doesn't include any of, like, you know, McMenamins Edgefield or, like, the outlet malls, any of those larger attractions, so to speak. So it's really focusing just on our downtown. I pulled data all the way back to two thousand and seventeen, because that's the last data point I could pull, and I mapped them all out, just to see every single month how we're comparing to other months. Obviously, you can see two thousand and twenty was a particularly sad year, but the red point is what I wanna call out the most, and that's two thousand and twenty-four. And you can see how much, how we've really recovered and how we are increasing the number of visitors that are visiting our town since two thousand and seventeen. The green lines are the ones that are all prior to two thousand and twenty, where the blue lines are post-two thousand and twenty, and the red being two thousand and twenty-four. It just, I think it really shows exactly how successful our work is in promoting Troutdale through Explore Troutdale and through the visitor center. So then I sort of compiled all of that and mapped each year, like, as an annual number and not each individual month, so taking each year's total visitation to the downtown and mapping it all out. You can see that in the years, we're still recovering from COVID, like, the past few years, we've still been trying to get back to pre-COVID numbers. And I think that the wildfires also did have an impact. When you look at the months, you can definitely see it more, but it's not as, you could see it a little bit in two thousand and eighteen, but it seems to sort of recover in two thousand and nineteen. But the two points that I wanted to really point out are the green and yellow dots that are above the two thousand and twenty-four number, because right now, we only have data through today. And those two dots are my estimates on what our total visitation will be by the end of the year. So I made two different predictions. The green dot is a prediction that averages the monthly visitation of all the other previous years excluding two thousand and twenty, because it's just not good, and it's not consistent, and put that point on the map. And then the conservative estimate is if we just took the averages of those months for two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three, and even then, it's still extremely close to the other prediction. And so I can pretty safely say that we will have the same numbers as pre-COVID this year in terms of visitation to our downtown. And I think that, again, this just speaks to how successful the events, the visitor center, the Explore Troutdale marketing, the website, all of that has been in helping us boost the economy and get us back to those pre-COVID numbers. So next steps, we have a couple of things that we're working on right now. We're gonna be expanding the Explore Troutdale collateral, so we're gonna be making a rack-card brochure for the Oregon Welcome Centers, Multnomah Falls, and the Portland Hotels. We're gonna make a Troutdale map with local attractions and landmarks that we can have the visitor center greeters, like, write on, throw directions on, put little, like, "this is my favorite thing to eat at this restaurant," notes like that on it. And then the Waterfall Corridor map, and with the Waterfall Corridor map, there's tons of Waterfall Corridor maps out there. We have tons of them in the visitor center. Each of them say one little thing that we like and one little thing that we don't like, and we wanna make one map that shows all the things that we want it to say while also putting Troutdale's brand on it, so that visitors remember that Troutdale is the town they went to when they went to go see Multnomah Falls. We're welcoming four new greeters who we just hired, and we're in the process of training them, so we'll have some new greeters at the visitor center, so stop and say hello to the new people. We're also continuing our work on designing and integrating the previous designs of the Bike Hub with the visitor center parking plans and proceeding with the construction of the Sandy River Trail. And then just continuing to expand and enhance the Explore Troutdale website and make a couple of changes to those so that it's easier for a user interface. And we can hopefully continue to attract more people to the webpage through some Google Ads, and hopefully that'll result in people coming to town. And that's it, thank you.
Awesome. Comments or questions from council? Counselor White?
Yeah, you know, the point of the chamber, too, was to get, you know, fill hotel rooms, so I always like to bring that up. Is there anything special you're doing concerning that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the chambers focus on, oops, sorry, if I did that or not. So the chamber focused a lot on filling hotel rooms because they were funded through transient lodging tax, and transient lodging tax is paid by hotel rooms. And yes, we are actively working on filling hotel rooms through similar promotional methods, but also some different ones, like the Explore Troutdale website, they didn't have a website specifically for the town, all of our Explore Troutdale ads, everything else, everything that we do to reach visitors, we're hoping to reach them either in a day-use capacity or in an overnight capacity. Obviously, we would love to increase overnight stays because that results in more tax dollars. But one of the things I think is different about our objective, being the city, is that we're more willing to promote the town to day-use visitors and not just to overnight visitors. So not everything is geared towards filling hotel rooms. We're also looking at, how can we literally just get the person who took I-84 to go to Multnomah Falls to decide to stop in Troutdale for lunch? Because we're less reliant on the tax dollars from the hotel because it's being supplemented through just, like, general fund and being a part of the city's operations, so. So we're doing more to, yes, increase hotel rooms and hotel stays, and actually to attract some new hotels to the area, too. But also, we're really focused on, our definition of visitor is larger than what a traditional definition of a visitor is, because we recognize that seventy-five percent of our visitors to Troutdale are not staying overnight in Troutdale, so.
Do we know the occupancy rate of the hotels now? Are they maxed out, or are they still have room?
That's a good question, I would probably have to do more research to be able to tell you with, like, hard definitive answer. I can say anecdotally that it's probably pretty consistent to before, but I think a lot of things depend on what's happening at McMenamins, like, are they maxing out concerts? Are they, you know, doing all these other sort of things? And so, yeah, I'd have to look probably more closely to give you, like, a firm answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rittman.
Yes, thank you, Marley, that, are the passes for the Waterfall Corridor, are those same-day passes? Okay, are they free?
Yes, they're free, and they're specifically for the I-84 parking lot at Multnomah Falls. And you only need them Memorial Day through Labor Day.
I think people who want those and go online, don't they have to pay?
Yeah, it's two dollars.
I see.
And so when they come in the visitor center?
Terribly staggering.
Well, we get to put a smile on their face because we get to tell them we're giving them something for free, and they're always expecting to have to pay for it, and so, like, they leave happy every time.
Well, and I think the ones, I just had somebody visiting this summer, the ones you order or do online have to be ordered ahead, they're not same-day. I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, they release them two weeks in advance, and then they release a few more two days in advance, but they often sell out, and so.
Oh, I see, but the ones from the visitor center are same-day.
Yep, same day.
Which you, sounds like you usually do.
We usually do, for now.
Yeah, well, wonderful.
We'll see how that changes as more people become aware.
Well, after all these people watch this council meeting and know, they're gonna be inundated next year.
Knocking on the door at nine AM.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll just comment and say I love to see all the social medias, the Troutdale is changing, you stay with the times and stay with the current advertising models and reaching the new generation, the early generation, I'd love to see it, it's great, so keep it up, thank you.
Counselor White?
Are you gonna do another presentation on, like, the events we had during the summer?
Yeah, I can, I think I usually do an event recap in, I think I probably do it in, like, January or February after Windy Wonderland is over, if I remember correctly.
So I had some feedback, but I'll save it for that.
Yeah, okay.
I will just say thank you. I think it's great, it's a cute little spot, and it's, it's just, it's a warm and biting air space, so, good job, and thank you.
Where are we at with signage to point people towards the visitor center?
Great question. We are, we have the Bike Hub plans, which kind of redesigned the entire exterior of the building, and that includes signage for the visitor center. It also includes signage for the Sandy River Front Trail and signage around parking. The blue visitor center signs are ODOT signs and are very difficult to change, because I hear every day someone make a comment about the blue sign that says that the visitor center is two blocks, and it's really five, and that is, people love to point it out. So I would love to get it changed, ODOT, if you're listening, please help me.
Okay. I'm gonna open up public comment. Anybody in council chambers wants to comment on the report of the Troutdale Visitor Center? Now's the time. If you want to, actually, you can stay there. Go ahead and approach the desk and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Hello, good night, my name is Saul Pompeo, and I'm the owner of Restaurante Pompeo. And I really like more, like, the vision of Marlene have to the visitor center, like the Chambers Commerce. I was many years in the Chambers Commerce, and I never agree how they feeling. The answer Marlene say is so much better, because in my opinion, it's more according to the code for the taxes, because Marlene say she put attention in the tourists already here, spend the money here, and that is supposed to be. The Chambers Commerce always thinking their job is the people stay in the hotels, and it's not how is it. It's for the money comes to the hotel, it's for the people comes to the town, they spend the money on the town, and that was the focus of Marlene, I really agree how she say. The only question I have is how I can use the visitor center for promoting my own business? Where I can put my menus? How I can put a link? How we can work together for you do your part, but the business we needs to do our part for work together? That is how we wants to. The next step is work together between the, the visitor center already do their job. Now the business we needs to do our job for connect together. That is only my question, my comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Saul.
And thank you, Marlene, for the job.
Anybody else wishes to make comment? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you.
You are welcome. And for any other businesses that are curious, we don't charge anything for, to promote any of our businesses, so they are free to bring menus or brochures to the visitor center at any time, and we do promote all of our downtown restaurants, well, actually, every business, on the Explore Troutdale website, so Restaurante de Pompeo is featured on the website already and has that link up there, and we'll get the menus from him, and our visitor center greeters are aware of all of our restaurants and are promoting them to everyone who walks in the door, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
This is the busiest section in our town, and it really seems to be taking off and thriving.
Yeah, this year's been really great, it's, I've definitely seen a lot more energy downtown.
If you would have included Sherbine, your numbers would have been off the charts.
Yeah, you kind of wanna, it's good to see it both ways, but it is really helpful to see it without, so that you know just how many people are coming down to downtown. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, great, thank you, Marley, appreciate it. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing in an Ordinance First Introduced on August twenty-seventh of this year, an ordinance amending the penalty provisions of the business license requirements, Chapter five point oh four of the Troutdale Municipal Code. Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall from a couple of weeks ago, this ordinance change was brought at the request of our city prosecutor, and the reason being is, is that the only current punishment for operating business without license is to make it a crime, which means that it's up to ninety days in jail and/or a fine, and because it is a crime, we have to provide court-appointed attorneys, and if they can't afford their own, we have to provide jury trials, and it takes a lot more time and work for our city attorney. So considering the fact that in my over forty years of experience in the municipal court, nobody has ever been sent to jail for operating business without license, we should eliminate that, at least on the first two offenses, if anybody ever gets to a third one, so that it is not designated a crime, so it's only a violation, so that we can just fine them, and it will cost a lot less to prosecute those that do prosecute, and they'll likely get the same sentence they would have gotten anyway, which is just a fine. So that is the only change, is that it makes it a step-up penalty phase, where it's a fine for the first two violations, and it only becomes a crime for a third violation, and last council meeting, nobody had any changes to the ordinance as written.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council before we start the public hearing? Counselor White?
Yeah, I had asked Ray before the meeting about, we actually do send a notice, if somebody forgets, for example, to buy their business license, they do get a notice. So I guess, I'm wondering if somebody does a pop-up business of sorts, that perhaps we should give them that same grace, you know, and give we should give them that, that same grace, you know, and give them a warning before we hit them with a ticket.
So, yeah, we do. Right now, we said, we have 150, 170 people who have business licenses. And starting in the fall, Sarah, about when? We start sending a letter to every single one of them?
Yes, we do. At the end of November, we give them to the end of January and then we send at least two more notices once they're late.
Right. And we also just recently had a concern about somebody who has a number of independent contractors in their business. The overall business has a license, the independent contractors don't, and they should. And so, we said, all right, you need to do it, but we'll wait till the first of next year to get them started correctly. We're not going to punish them and we're not going to make them pay a full year's worth of business license for the last three months. So, we do everything we can to work with businesses and be business friendly. The only issue we have, I think the example that we, this last one was prosecuted, was somebody who set up a concession stand on the side of the road and was just selling stuff on the side of the road without permission of landowner, without getting a business license. And, and that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to stop from just being rogue. But other than that, we're very pro-business friendly in terms of reminding people, get in here.
And is there a late fee if you do forget?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Okay. That's, that's good incentive as well.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on agenda item number four, ordinance amending the Troutdale, I'm sorry, amending the penalty provisions of the business license requirements, chapter 5.04 of the Troutdale Municipal Code. Anybody wishing to make comment during this public hearing, now's the time. Go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody jump at the opportunity. Now I'm going to close the public hearing. And if there's no more discussion or comments from council?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending the penalty provisions of the business license requirements, chapter 5.04 of the Troutdale Municipal Code. I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel White.
Counsel White.
Yes.
Counsel Whitren.
Yes.
Counsel Rittman.
Yes.
Counsel Caswell.
Yes.
Counsel One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes. Thank you very much. And now that takes us to our next public hearing. Agenda item number five, a public hearing and ordinance. This is the first reading of this ordinance, amending Troutdale Municipal Code, section 13.20.410, establishing fines that may be imposed for violations of Troutdale Municipal Code, chapter 13.20. Mr. Travis Holton, Public Works Director, welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
So, the ordinance introduction that's in front of you is dealing with the Parks Code. As you'll recall, a few months ago, we delved into the Parks Code as we were talking about the allowance for dogs in parks. During that process, one of the other elements we began to address was the, were the penalty provisions that were available in Parks Code for violations of various parks rules. And there was a lot of talk about enforcement during the discussion about the dogs and rules for dogs in parks. Somewhere along the way, that language was dropped out of the proposed ordinance. I think that was, best I can tell, due to a clerical error. The council didn't seem to have any concerns with the proposed language at that time, nor were there any objections from the public. That language would have basically gave the city the ability to impose a fine on someone for violating exclusion order from a park, which is currently really the only enforcement tool we have, is to kick somebody out and then exclude them. And then that language would have fined them if they came back and violated that exclusion order. Subsequently, you know, maybe the fact that that didn't survive through the process for whatever reason may have been for the best, because in the meantime, staff discussed it and decided that, you know, maybe rather than having it sort of the secondary enforcement tool for exclusion orders, that maybe it's better just to have the capability to fine someone for violation of a parks rule directly, without first excluding them from the park. So, that's the language we brought for you, to you tonight, to give you the opportunity to put some additional enforcement tools into the code if the council so chooses, since it seemed like this council was supportive of something like that in the past. And that's the ordinance we're presenting to you tonight for first reading. I'll be happy to, oh, well, let me, let me go over what those actual penalties would be, sorry. So, what we're proposing, I, I actually looked at the, what seemed to be sort of in the similar vein of severity, which would be nuisances. So, I thought, you know, violations of parks rules, that's probably about the same level as, you know, a lot of our nuisance violations. So, I looked at that language in the nuisance code and what the penalties are for that and borrowed that language basically directly over with one change. The nuisance code actually has a higher amount for the, the first offense, a higher potential amount for the first offense, first and second. Parks rules mostly, you know, are, are not really terrible things that people are doing for the most part. So, it seemed more prudent to reduce that a bit. So, the, what we've proposed here, which is certainly up to discussion by the council, whatever level you all think is appropriate. But what we've put in this proposed ordinance is that the violation of parks rule may be fined up to $250. Doesn't have to be 250, it could be up to 250. And of course, that would be somewhat determined by the enforcement person issuing a citation and then ultimately the municipal court judge could, could adjust that fine as the judge felt appropriate. Similar to nuisance code, we also include a provision that for habitual offenders, somebody who violates the same rule over and over again, on the third, third conviction, they could be fined up to $1,000. Not, doesn't have to be $1,000, it could be up to $1,000, depending on the severity of the violation and the fact that it's a habitual offense. So, that's what's in front of you tonight for a first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have or take any feedback you have on the proposed ordinance.
Comments or questions? Counsel White.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like at Glen Otto, you know, most people are in their bathing suits and swimming and stuff, how, how would you actually give them a ticket? You know, if they don't have ID or...
Well, I mean, that's a good question. I don't know if the city attorney or the city manager has any thoughts on that.
Well, they usually just wait until they come out of the water.
Yeah, I mean, if someone...
Or they walk up and say, could you please come here?
Yeah, if someone has, is empowered to enforce parks rules, certainly if it's a, if it's a police officer, they, you know, they can demand that you produce identification or identify yourself. But, you know, that's, that's actually a legal question I don't know the answer to, if someone does not possess ID and refuses to identify themselves to someone other than a police officer. So, for instance, our, our contracted enforcement services or control services, which we used this last, this past summer, probably at that point, they would request assistance from the sheriff's office, I guess.
And I think a, a city enforcement officer has the right to ask a person to identify themselves. And if they lie, well, then they lie. But the officer might also take a picture of the person with their camera, their phone camera, can help.
Yeah, and like any situation that occurs in a park, if, if it is beyond the capability of, of the, your staff or, or contracted enforcement personnel, they have the capability to call in assistance from a sworn police officer.
And then, I'm not a big fan of like a lot of signs in parks, you know, you want to keep them kind of beautified and stuff, but it seems like, like I know at Glen Otto, they, they moved the parks sign, or they redid it. And it's in the corner of Sugar Pine, so if, unless you're crossing the Troutdale Bridge, you're not going to see it. If you pull in the parking lot, and I don't know if they have signage elsewhere, but that's like the main one that lists all the rules that I know of.
You know, certainly that's something, it's an ongoing effort for us to try to optimize our, our signage at our parks and our sign placement. We've been working on the dog signage, obviously, most recently with some of the changes that occurred. So, that's something that we can always take a look at and see if there's other places where we need to, either direct people to, you know, either post the rules directly or direct them verify rules.
And then, how long does the first, let's say you get a ticket in a park, how long does that stay active or is there statute of limitations so you don't get hit on the second one at a higher fine? How does that work?
Not really. No, there isn't. I, I think ten years maybe? Statute ultimate repose?
You mean for getting the second offense?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I think that most of the time, a municipal judge would say, I'm going to try to read his mind.
Yeah.
It would be good luck, would be, yeah, good luck. Would be, if it's a, if it's connected, if it's the same behavior, similar place versus something that's different. You know, if the person simply leaves their, their trash from their watch, gets up and leaves it there, does it a second time, it doesn't matter if it's a month or two months later, it's the same, the same thing again. And as you said before, if it's becoming a habitual offender by the third time, maybe that was, maybe that was somebody else talking. You know, and, and there's discretion in it and people can, can argue about it and that, that's when the person who commits the offense can take it up with the municipal judge and talk about it, that it's different.
And I can add that, as I said, I, I borrowed the story language directly from the nuisance code, so it would, it would work the same that it does for nuisances. So, and probably there's a higher likelihood of someone being a repetitive nuisance offender than there is a repetitive parks rule offender, because as you know, many nuisances have to do with maintaining something or failing to maintain something and oftentimes, the same people fail to maintain things over and over again.
Are there comments or questions? All right, if there are none, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Public hearings open on agenda item number five, an ordinance amending Troutdale Municipal Code, section 13.20.410, establishing fines that may be imposed for, for violations of the Troutdale Municipal Code, chapter 13.20. Anybody wishes to make comment? Now's the time. Approach the table, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm going to close the public hearing. So, this is just the introduction. We're not making a decision, just asking questions and getting information. I, for one, think the fines are wonderful. Thank you. No one commented on what the question was about, so I thought I'd comment. I think it hits the nail on the head. Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to agenda item number six, a motion to appoint a negotiating committee for the MCSO IGA. Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council recalls, this is a follow-up from our discussion at the last council meeting where I reported on the Public Safety Working Group's recommendation, which is, we're at a point now where the sheriff has come back with what they think should be the starting point for negotiating new contract. And we need to have a smaller nimble group who can now, without being covered by public meetings, actually begin negotiations with the sheriff's office. And so, the recommendation was, is that the committee be consisting of five people. I suggested two of the five should be Mr. Trumpke and myself and three citizens. And then it was kind of a back and forth discussion. We didn't talk about it too much last council meeting. Who should the other three people be? If that five is a good number, it's just, we'd like to get this appointed sooner than later by motion so that we can begin gathering the committee, get going and prepare a response to the sheriff's office.
What was the, really quick, what was the recommendation from the ad hoc committee for the three people?
We didn't vote, but Counsel One and Counsel Whitren were there and let them kind of think what they thought we should be doing, what came out of the meeting.
As chair of that committee, the consensus, the, the straw poll looking across was two council members and one other member of the committee should be on as well as joining the two people to my right.
Okay.
So...
Was there a indication as to who the other person from the committee was?
It seemed like, once again, straw poll.
Yeah.
I mean, that Tanny should be, as he was on the last negotiating committee, having that knowledge, working forward, be as invested in that group as he is as well, joining Jeffrey and myself, as myself has already been on the commit, this, the working group committee since day one. That was the general consensus that I felt was coming out of there.
Okay.
Maybe Jeffrey has a different vibe, but that was, that's what I was getting, the feeling. I think that was the general way that we were moving forward. That was what I was going to say.
Okay. Based off of that and based off conversations I've had with Ray, I think leaning towards what the ad hoc committee is looking forward, to pushing forward with this negotiating committee, I'm comfortable with going forward with their recommendation. And again, straw poll recommendation, not an official vote.
Right. I will say that, once again, I've been on this committee, the working group committee, since day one. I have a lot invested in it. I, I've tried hard to make sure this thing is moving forward in, in the correct manner. I am very concerned about it as well and making sure that the city is getting the most out of it it can. I also understand that there can be concerns of where I land come election time going into next year. But I also think there could be a change if I don't get reelected. But right now, I, I really think, I'm the subject, it's my opinion, I'm the subject matter expert as far as, as anybody else sitting here, so...
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Counsel Rittman?
Oh, sorry. No, no, it's okay. Good work.
First of all, I, I spoke with you, Ray, earlier today about it, and you had mentioned you, Ed and Eric Mueller and being on it.
Oh, yeah.
Two councilors.
Eric could be involved. He doesn't have to necessarily be on the committee, but Eric would definitely be involved.
On this negotiating committee?
Yeah.
All right, well, that sort of changed it. I also, and I, I talked to Jordan about it, because I thought Counsel One and I are the only ones that are still going to be here for sure next time. One, one will be mayor, but we'll both be here after the election. And so, I was willing to step up and be on it, on this negotiating committee. And in fact, you know, Jordan and I picked around the idea of my actually going on the working, the working group, you know, safety working group, a little bit, but no decision. You know, I didn't know that it had been discussed at the committee and that sort of straw poll was taken. Anyway, I, so Eric Mueller is not going to be on this negotiating committee. That's the, that's the idea.
Yeah, that wasn't the initial recommendation. Not that he's a bad person beyond the committee. We're just trying to keep the numbers from being too big and cumbersome. I mean, you could make it Ed and I and Eric and then three other people and that's fine too.
Well, and I think, and this is my opinion, and tell me if I'm wrong, and it's okay if I am, I'm wrong most of the time. Eric's going to be involved at one point, one former fashion, moving forward regardless, as our finance director, not necessarily needing to be on the negotiating committee. He'll be involved further down the road. He's involved right now. So, I don't necessarily think that Eric needs to be sitting on the negotiating committee. I'm comfortable with Ray and Ed being the city employee, city staff representation on that. And then Eric is going to, I mean, I hate to put it this way, but he's going to fall in line because that's what his job title is going to entail for him in this process. So, I, I'm comfortable with Ray and Ed being on that negotiating committee as a two city staff.
I certainly am with that.
Two counselors and a citizen. Yeah. Counsel White? Actually, let me go to Counsel One really quick. He, he was going next.
I think I started out getting on this committee, sticking my foot in my mouth. And I think it's really important that we keep in mind how long this process has been going for and that we've finally gotten to a point with a group of people who have been working together for the same common goal, to get to this point where we can negotiate. And so, I just wanted to say that I, I support Jordan being on the negotiating committee, having been, having the background and the knowledge and, and gone through all the steps that we've gone through to get to this point. And, and so, we, you know, as a group, we decided in that committee to have five members with the idea that I think that would be Jordan and myself. And so, I just wanted to make sure that my voice was heard in, in saying that I think it's really important that we have, not that we're all subject matter experts and we can't learn about it, but just with how this process is, has gone out, that we kind of keep to that and we keep that process moving forward.
Counsel White?
Yeah, I, I like, I like that you asked the committee to select one of their peers and no surprise, it was Tanny. I don't know, he's going to have to clone himself. But, you know, the election complicates it slightly and this is no offense, but I'm, I'm thinking that it'd be wise of us to have, have Dave in there as well, have three counselors. It wouldn't be a quorum. And because if you're not on, on council, and I might not make it back, we have 10 opponents after all, that we don't have to... opponents after all, that we don't have to start from, we'll lose a lot of time. And Dave is skilled in contract law, he understands it very well. I've seen him in action several times, and he's, I think he'd be a valuable asset to that team. And it kind of covers all the bases that way. And, and then you guys can decide after the election if it's necessary to have a third person or not. But do you understand what I, I hope I didn't hurt anybody's feelings in saying that, but I think he's just smart.
Yeah.
Otherwise, because, you know, Jeffrey got in a little, you know, like he mentioned, he put his foot in his mouth, but it was out of that same concern, hey, we're running out of time on this thing, and we've got to get it right. It's our most important function as a city, and it's also our most expensive, one of our most expensive items that we have. So I'd be in favor of having the three, three of you guys do it. It stacks the deck a little bit, and then reevaluate it after the election. And I would add, too, that if, if someone is being endorsed by the sheriff's office, that that could, that could be a conflict of interest as well. And I, and I don't know that that's happened or is going to happen, but I'm just throwing it out.
Okay. Councilor Wittrum?
Personally, I'd like to keep it at five, just to keep the chatter and streamlining at minimum. We're less than two months away from the election. What are we going to accomplish? You know, they have one probably working group between then and now, and we're going to know who's elected. And if I'm on the negotiating team and I need to be replaced, we could simply do that in another meeting. It's pretty, pretty easy to, to just change, do a name change.
Yeah.
Well, we'd still be a counselor until January.
But we could replace somebody else to, on the negotiating team. And then we can also replace, at that same time, who else is going to be on the working group as well.
Right. I think what you're saying is you would step down.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Instead of waiting until...
If I'm not on, if I'm not being reelected, I'm not going to hold the works up. I'm going to, yeah, let's, let's get somebody else on the, on the working group, get somebody else on, on the negotiating team. We could instantly, as soon as we know the, the results of the election.
Okay. Councilor Caswell, do you have any opinion on the matter? Even if you don't, I would love your, I would love your input.
I, I agree with what you said, Mayor.
Thank you. So in the interest of getting this set, we don't have to do this tonight, but I would like to move forward if we have enough consensus to get this negotiating team set tonight, so we can move forward a little bit more quickly with regards to actually responding to what the information we received from MCSO with regards to the next contract. I, again, I personally, Councilor Ripma, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just explain myself, I guess. I, when I called Councilor Wittrum to discuss this, I didn't know he was felt that strongly about wanting to be on the committee. And I don't feel that strongly. I have been very interested in the subject of our fire and sheriff's contracts, and have worked on it, but not on the committee, and you have. So I recognize that. So I'm not going to make it. I, I appreciate being, you know, I don't need another thing to do. And I appreciate the counselors, Wittrum and One, willing to do it. So let's just leave it at that. And so we could, we could have a resolution forming the committee, and then appoint Counselors Wittrum, One, and Tanny Staffenson as the public, as members, along with Ray and Ed. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, I believe that's what we're talking about. I was going to open it up to public comment. I would like to get Tanny's point of view, moving forward before we assign him to yet another committee. So if there's no other comments or questions from council or discussion, I'm going to open it up for public comment. On Agenda Item Number Six, a motion to appoint a negotiating committee for the MCSO IGA. Anybody wishing to approach the desk? Mr. Staffenson? And give public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and state your name and city of residence for the record, please, and thank
Good evening, Mayor Lauer. City Councilors Tanny Staffenson, Troutdale resident, and I am a member of the working group presently. Have been on that group since it started. And I guess I'll just say it's something I'm very passionate about. I've seen us start our police, I've seen us sell our police, I've seen, you know, the whole thing go through all the cycles. So I think it's something very, very important to our citizens. And I'm very glad that we're taking it as seriously as we are, and we're doing the steps we are to make sure that we get the best product we can for our residents.
What skillset do you bring to the...
Probably not.
Can you commit to...
Can you commit to nightly meetings?
Probably no skillset.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, just so we're all clear, that this group, our city council, will be obviously updated and made aware of like what's going on in that, and the right forms and whatnot. And so nothing's like being hidden from anybody. I think that, you know, not that Dave's not a, a good addition, and maybe in due time, but I think that keeping our group small, concise, to the people that have been there the, for most of those meetings, will hopefully expedite our process in coming out with a good quality contract that's good for not only, you know, the city, but for everybody that lives here, and our neighboring cities. So I just wanted to make sure you can remember that.
Councilor White?
This is strictly for the police portion of it, not fire?
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Well, maybe we better do it that way, because we, I'm sure we're going to be having a fire negotiation team as well.
Yep, exactly. Okay, there's no further discussion. I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we appoint a negotiating committee for the MCSO IGA, or negotiating the MCSO IGA.
Point of order. Ed, do we need to name who we're appointing? Or can we do that in a resolution at a later, I mean...
Eric, can we do it all in one fell swoop?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to remember what your code, you actually have a code provision that talks about this. I looked that up.
And I have the same reason.
We would form the committee, and then Randy could appoint.
Okay.
And then the council gets to vote on whether we do it or not.
Okay, so the motion is sufficient for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to specify the number or anything?
Not at the moment.
No. Okay, so the motion and second?
We'll call. Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Wittrum?
Yes.
Councilor Ripma?
Yes.
Councilor Caswell?
Yes.
Councilor One?
Yes.
And Mayor Lauer?
Yes. All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the conversation. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Seven.
Well, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you would be permitted to make an, an appointment. Could he make an appointment right now?
Tonight?
Yeah, all five.
Let's go.
And then we get to vote on it.
Let's go.
A council vote to approve it.
Okay. So I'm going to appoint Counselor One, Counselor Wittrum, Ray Young, Ed Trumpke, and then Tanny Staffenson to sit on the negotiating committee for the MCSO IGA.
And I move approval of the mayor's appointments.
Second.
All right, let's take another vote.
Good catch there. I thought, I thought we just did that. The first one.
Okay, Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Wittrum?
Yes.
Councilor Ripma?
Yes.
Councilor Caswell?
Yeah.
Councilor One?
Yes.
And Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
I think that's going to be a good team.
Yeah. And we'll move forward. Thank you very much.
I agree.
All right, now, Agenda Item Number Seven, staff communications. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, we have officially awarded the Sandy River Trail Project contract to Coff Construction. They have started signing the documents, sending them back to us. We're having a pre-construction meeting next week, is it Travis? Or we're setting one out now?
It's not on the schedule.
Not on the schedule?
Being scheduled.
Being scheduled. I have heard through the grapevine that any second now, United Civic Road Road is going to send us our C and M agreement. I have encouraging news, haven't seen it yet, but I was told it was on the way.
Which is good.
We should have it within the year.
We should, yes. Yes, we should have it within the year then, or before the project's done. Second of all, Planning Commission is meeting tomorrow night, and if you want a preview of what you're going to get on the August, October 8th meeting, the county's going to be there to do a presentation regarding the proposed plan for Halsey in front of McMinimum. It's kind of the Main Street Halsey, kind of what road changes they're going to make in Halsey. So that'll be at the Planning Commission tomorrow night, but they'll also be coming on the August 8th council meeting to do the same presentation for council about what's going on, what they're planning to do, not immediately, but what their design plans. And they've worked McMinimums about how to change Halsey. So that'll be on the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. And finally, as I sent you an email, on October 19th, the Trauma Intervention Program is having their annual banquet up at, and I always pronounce it wrong, Elahhe.
L and A.
L and A. On October 19th. Councilor White, you may not be back from the LOC conference by then on that Saturday night, but maybe you will, because LOC conference is at Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But he's the only one from council that's going, so anybody else wants to bring a guest and come, let me know. If we cannot fill our table of 10 up with council members and their guests, then we will invite committee members, starting with chairs, to see if they want to come, and so we can fill up our table. It's a great event. The TIP program is amazing. They are the ones that show up to support our police and fire services whenever there's a tragedy. They were right on the spot when the plane crash happened, you know, last weekend when three people died. They're just an amazing resource, and as most of you know, they're led by June Bining, wife of a former Troutdale detective and current Multoma County Sheriff, a detective who is a Troutdale resident. So it's a great program, provides a great service to the community. So let me know if you and/or you and a guest would like to come on that Saturday night, October 19th. October 19th, yes.
October 19th.
That's it.
All right. Council Communications. Counselor Caswell, I'll start with you.
Yep, nothing for me.
All right. Counselor Ripma?
I went to the first Friday, couple of, you know, last week, and was pleased with a very good turnout. It was really a good turnout. And there was, it turned out to be a decent evening, a little, a little hazy maybe, but it wasn't beastly hot or anything. And it was a lot of fun, and that has just been a great success all summer, except for the one we had to cancel. Just wanted to compliment staff on that, Marley especially. Thank you, that's all.
Councilor White?
Don't have anything today?
Oh, man. Councilor White?
Yeah, I was also at the first Friday, and I ran into our mayor, and I saw Dave there. And I also filled out the survey that our Public Safety Advisory Committee was doing. They had it set up, and I had to wait in line to get the survey, so. And they were giving out these really cool fish, troutfish pans. I'm going to turn mine into a fishing lure. There was no, there wasn't enough parking, is the comment I was getting from people. And they were wondering why we couldn't park on Second Street. And I looked at it, and I go, I'm sure it's so you can get trucks and the shuttle bus through there, but it looked like we could allow parking on one side of the road or the other, and still accommodate the traffic. So I thought I'd throw that out there. You probably know more about it. I'll save it for your, your next time we see you, Marley.
The hot seat he was talking about.
I promise I would bring that up, so that's why I'm doing it. That's all I have.
Councilor Wittrum?
Just chiming in behind all that, it's, it's amazing how much of a destination point Troutdale is becoming, as we do family events and we try to all get together, it's, everybody wants to come this way, and because they, they think Troutdale is just a cool little town. So it, it's so great to see that everybody's wanting to come out here. So that's all I have.
Troutdale is a great city, and I love living here. And I love spending time with you all a couple times a month during the year. It's a, it's a great time. I will say that school has started, so slow down during school hours. Where you're going is not more important than the kids coming and going to school.